I am the moderator for our evening together. With me are our timekeepers Barbara Karen and our screeners Connie, Mary, and Glenn. And we do have ushers walking around as well. The League is nonpartisan and for your information, I do not live in this district and I am impartial to these proceedings. This forum is an opportunity for you to meet all of your candidates for the Penridge School District. The school board is a legislative body of citizens elected locally by their fellow citizens to serve as their representatives. Your board consists of nine members who volunteer to serve four-year terms without a head. After I introduce the candidates, the format will be in four segments. We will begin with a one-minute opening statement by each of the candidates that will allow them to further introduce themselves to you. The next segment will be a few questions written by the League of Women Voters. And then the following segment will be questions from all of you. The questions should be on issues that affect the Pennsbury School District and should be ready for all candidates. I'm so sorry. I'm at the wrong school. I'm sorry. We do have ushers that will be distributing note cards for you. And please write your answers. Please forward your questions to the ushers so that they can be given to our screeners up here. Please print them for me to read them easily. And they will be screened by our members for relevance, repetition, and propriety. The forum will conclude with one-minute closing statements by each of the candidates. The first candidate to answer each question will be given 90 seconds to provide their answer. And afterwards, candidates who would like to respond may do so in 90 seconds as well. At the discretion of the moderator, they may be given an additional 30-second rebuttal. We will alternate who goes first to answer all questions. Our timers will hold up a sign to indicate your time as we go down. When you do see a red light, please finish your sentence and stop talking. After a meeting, at a meeting before the forum, the candidates randomly selected the order in which they will give an opening closing statements and answer the questions. The candidate forum will end no later than 9:00 P.M. Now, just a few directions for all of you that came today. Out of courtesy to everyone, please refrain from applauding or in other ways demonstrating your support or non-support for a candidate. At the end of the forum, you may applaud for everyone. Please remove any buttons or put away any signs for any political party or candidate. And all materials must remain outside. Please silence your cell phones. And no one except the permitted lead partner is allowed to use visual or audio equipment. Please, we are broadcasting this forum through the League's Facebook page. So I know there's a lot of rules and a lot of explanations. And now I'd like to introduce the candidates. And I'm going to do it in alphabetical order, so we're going to jump around the table a little bit. Mr. Bieberz, Mr. Bonji Avani, Mr. Lefevere, Mr. Menary, Mr. McMullin, Mr. Russell, Ms. Taylor, and Mr. Trauber. We will begin with a one-minute opening statement to further introduce the candidates for them to further introduce themselves. Candidates, perhaps you could explain and address why you were running with your qualifications. In accordance with the drawing before the forum, we will begin with Mr. Bieberz. You have 90 or 60 seconds.
Good evening. Thanks everyone for being here. My name is Dan Bieberz. I'm a behavior analyst. What that means is I work with students with autism and special needs and medically complex to help them remain safe and in the best learning environment. So I have been in the education field for over a dozen years. But before that, it was mentoring programs and I've always been drawn to education and supporting teachers. And this is another attempt at doing that. My wife and I moved here five years ago. We built our house ourselves by hand, so you better believe I'm not leaving it. I'm here in Penridge to stay. We have twin girls who will start their school during my hopeful tenure at school board at Southernville Elementary. I believe it's our duty to give back. This is how I think I can best do that, based on my experience, my desire to support students and teachers. And my decisions, my decisions being based on fact and data-based evidence.
Thank you. Mr. Lefevere, you have 60 seconds.
My name is Daniel Lefevere. I am a Penridge grad. I also graduated from the Upper Bucks Public Tech School. That was a lot longer than when I lived there. My main reasons for wanting to run are I am Penridge proud. I remember coming here and at the time, I was not a very great student. But as I learned, as I got older, that it was actually a great place to learn. I had a lot of great opportunities. So my wife and I worked very hard for us to be able to come back, to move back into the district. And, excuse me, I'm bad with mics. I've worked in education for over 13 years. That's only the time that I was working there. My entire family is teachers. My family owns a private school down in Doylestown, which I quite literally grew up at. And I have done everything from teaching kindergarten class to making sure the facilities are running to unlogging toilets. So I know what it takes to run a school from a hands-on standpoint. And much like Dan said, this is just my way of giving back to our community. One of the things that I really am motivated by is wanting to make sure
You can finish.
Make sure that we're keeping politics out of our schools. Our children need to be educated and learning.
Thank you. Mr. Menary.
Yes, good evening. My name is Daniel Menary and it is a true honor to be here as one of your school board candidates. Just a little bit about me, I am a lifelong resident of over 20 years and a proud 2018 graduate. Growing up, my grandfather really instilled in me the importance of public service. And that instilled in me the importance of giving back to our community, which is why I'm on this stage tonight. I believe that my current position as a judge of elections in West Rockville Township and an employee for the Pennsylvania Senate has given me the ability to connect with residents regarding their concerns, their ideas, as well as their various perspectives for what they would like to see as for the Penridge School District. I'm running because I would like to bring common sense policies back to the school board. I would look forward to our discussion this evening. And again, I thank you again so much for your time.
Thank you. Mr. McMullin.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for coming out. All right, you're going. All right. My wife and I, we've lived in Southernville for about 16 years. We have two children, both in high school. And one is splitting his time into the co-tech school, Upper Bucks County Technical School. For the past 26 years, I've been an IT infrastructure engineer for the municipal infrastructure, pharmaceutical, and healthcare fields. And in my time doing this, I participated and led several diverse groups of project groups, listening, but just by listening, and coming to come around to progress to the fruition of the project. This is why I'm bringing the board with civility and grace. As to why I'm here, I was raised to be the change I wanted to see. Quite frankly, I wasn't seeing it, so here I am. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Taylor.
Hi, my name's Carley Taylor. Thank you for being here this evening to hear us. I am a lifelong West County resident. I grew up in Doylestown and then also Bedminster as a teenager and young adult. I moved to Colorado for 10 years where I was a lab manager in the biotech space. I dealt a lot with policy creation, handling deviations and issues within the lab, as well as training and compliance. Those are things that I really want to bring to the board, being able to look through our challenges and really work backwards from a reasonable and logistical standpoint is something I feel. I have a five-year-old daughter in kindergarten at Grass. And being a mother, applying my mother's intuition to all the children in the district is something that I feel is really important. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Russell, you have 60 seconds.
My name is Jonathan Russell and I want to thank the League of Women Voters for putting on the event this evening. When I was appointed to the school board four years ago to serve out a two-year term, I did so with the understanding that I might add some value to the board. And in running this time, I still feel like that's the motivation, is that if I can add some value to the board, I want to do it. And adding value, my thinking is fourfold. The first is that as a father of four children, two of whom have graduated from Penridge High School, two of whom are still within the school district, I am invested in interest in seeing the success of our public schools. Secondly, I've been a trial attorney for 32 years. I know what it's like to get along with people that I don't necessarily agree with. We can still accomplish a common goal without being nasty or rude. We can be civil in how we discuss ideas that may differ from one another. Thirdly, I'm a small business owner. I've owned a business for 20 years. I know what it means to make a budget, to live within that budget. I know what it means to make payroll, to hire, fire, and to manage people. Finally, as a community member, I've been asked multiple times to serve on various boards within the community. And in doing so, over 20 years, I've seen good governance. I know what good processes look like. And if you value that, I would encourage you to vote for me on the number four.
Thank you. Mr. Trauber.
Good evening. Thank you for coming. My name is Tom Trauber from East Rockville Township. I have three kids in the district. My wife and I have lived in Penridge since 2004. We both grew up in a neighboring district. My extended family has lived in Penridge, so I feel like I've been in the Penridge community my entire life. But again, my reason for running is to protect the education and to get, have a better education, the best possible education for my three children. One is in elementary school, one is here in middle school. My oldest is a freshman at the high school and she's also attending the tech school as well. I have been in the schools. I've been involved there in events during the PTO. My professional life, I've spent the last 25 years advocating for older adults in Pennsylvania. And advocacy has become my passion. And if I'm willing to do it for the older adults in Pennsylvania, I want to be able to now as well do that for the children in the public school system.
Thank you. And Mr. Bonji Avani, you have 60 seconds.
Good evening. Thank you everyone for coming here. My name is Mike Bonji Avani. I've lived in the Perpacy area for over 30 years. After retiring a few years ago, I felt a real need to serve and give back to community and the school district. I have two children that passed through the Penridge School District, so I felt the need to give back to that and to serve. I bring 37 years of educational experience with me as a public school, high school math teacher. I am totally familiar with how public schools operate. I know the ins and outs. I don't know everything. I can't claim to be perfect, but I do know how things work. I would really like to promote open communication between the school board and staff, faculty, students, parents, and community. I live by four guided principles. One is integrity, commitment, honesty, and educational experience.
Wonderful. Thank you. Did you get all the water passed down? Thank you. All right, and now we will move on to the questions from the League. And as a reminder, the first candidate will have 90 seconds to give their answer. And the remaining candidates will each have 90 seconds if they would like to respond as well. The first question will be answered by Mr. Lefevere. What are the most pressing issues for the Penridge School District? And you have 90 seconds to respond.
That's a great question. That's a very open-ended question. I think that that is going to depend on who you're talking to, to be honest with you. But the most pressing issues are absolutely the turmoil that we've been through in previous years. Our district made national reviews for the absolute wrong reasons. Because we had people who were trying to quit politics, were trying to use our children as a battlefield to wage their war, to continue the culture wars, to just do all the wrong things and not focus on education. So I think our most pressing issue is making sure that we are focused on the education of our students, that we are bringing in programs, which we should be bringing in, that are not wasting our funds, are not, you know, driving up lawsuits, not causing more problems for us, but are focused on ensuring that our students have simply learned how the law works. You know, my daughter is here at Bedminster and I want to make sure that she is able to go to school and learn just math, how numbers work. Start learning how to read. Once you get to the high school, it gets a little more complicated for sure, but it's real simple. Think facts are facts. Things that happened in the past have happened in the past and we should be teaching those things. Those things aren't necessarily bad. Or if they are, then it's something that we learn from. Everything is a learning opportunity. We should be approaching our education that way.
Thank you. Mr. Menary, you are next. You have 90 seconds to respond.
Thank you. I think the first issue that we need to address is the budget and the state of the budget in our district. Within the last five years, Penridge has lost about 1,000 students. And yet recently, this board decided to raise the property taxes for the first time in eight years. This is in spite of the fact that the base increase revenue of the district has increased, as well as the district getting a percentage of each home sale when each home is sold. So I think it is concerning that there was, the board decided that it felt was appropriate to raise people's taxes when we are servicing less fees and the district is gaining additional revenues. Looking at our finances, it's certainly our first and most impressive issue. Again, to go on what Mr. Lefevere said, we need to be teaching our students how to think and not what to think. This includes, I believe, teaching things like financial literacy to all students and making that a part of our requirement when we graduate. A strong understanding of not just the national government, but especially state and local government. I can't tell you how many times I have spoken to people and they have no clue what a school board director does or a township supervisor. I believe that is absolutely essential that every student knows what that is before they graduate. As well as just cursive writing, the ability to write your name in cursive to sign a document. So I loudly agree that we need to be teaching our students skills and I believe that these skills are important to play in the classroom. Thank you.
Mr. McMullin, you have 90 seconds.
Yes, I think the very first thing we have to do is reestablish parental trust. I think a lot of the recent board, school district board groups have forced parents to pull their kids from the public school system in favor of homeschooling and charter schools. And now we're feeling the financial pinch on the charter school amount that we have to pay out to the individual schools. So I think that's where we have to start. We have to start working with the parents and rebuilding that trust.
Thank you. Ms. Taylor, you have 90 seconds.
I think one of the largest issues that we're going to face in coming on the board is balancing the budget and aging infrastructure issues. It's clear over the last eight years, a lot of avoidance has happened in managing the finances responsibly. We've seen boards using our emergency funds that are for the district to pay for programs that they can't fund themselves. We have seen using COVID relief funds as a patch to avoid raising taxes. Improper use of funds and mismanaging the budget is one of the reasons I decided to get up here and run. I have experience managing a budget within a lab, building out with the technology that only existed in the place I worked. So there were a lot of unique challenges figuring that out. And I think I have what it takes to figure out paths to our success. Things that we can do with the budget, you know, looking at how we're investing in things, how we're building out, looking at long-term planning. From the committee meetings that I've attended, I have not seen a focus on gathering metrics within the district. And that is how we make our decisions from a factual basis and not from how we perceive things. These are also the things that I'm hearing in the community when I speak to houses that I knock at the door, so I will focus on this.
Thank you. Mr. Russell.
I think the number one concern we have is to make sure that any student that comes through Penridge is equipped to take on whatever challenges they want to after they graduate. They want to make sure that they have a foundational base set of knowledge, skills, or a skill set that they could either enter the workforce or go on to college or any career that they choose. The issue is concerning right sizing our budget, you know, as has been mentioned, that we have lost 1,000 students. Our budget has increased the base, the tax base has increased every year. And this was the first year that they actually increased the tax rate. So that's, you know, something needs to be done to make sure that we're right sizing for purposes of that. I also think what was mentioned about the COVID funds, the COVID funds weren't meant to continue. The COVID funds were given by the federal government to help us with learning loss that occurred during COVID. And you can't get used to that and then continue trying to budget based upon what you paid for with federal funds. When those federal funds then are removed, we're going to have difficulty trying to continue those programs if there's no funding for that. So that's an important component. Additionally, I think we do a really good job on our highest learners, our AP learners, and a really good job on those that don't learn as well. I think there needs to be a greater emphasis on those in the middle. We want to make sure that they're not left behind. If you look at our scores in the middle school for reading and math, they're pathetic. And I think there needs to be some adjustment with that. There may have been some issues associated with how the testing occurred, but those scores are really abysmal.
Thank you. Mr. Bonji Avani, you have 90 seconds.
Boy, it's tough going near the end. He's heard a lot of stuff there already. I don't want to reiterate everything that everyone said, but I'll just emphasize. Obviously, we need to, we need to get much more fiscally responsible. We need to look at a lot of different areas before increasing taxes. I do want to focus on a balance between what educational excellence is for kids and also with respect to taxpayers. There are things we can look at. We can look at zero-based budgets. Instead of working off last year's budget, we could work off a zero-based budget. We could also look at educational foundation, where there's partnerships with local businesses. Some districts bring in millions of dollars through those, okay? And I think also in terms of students, I really want the focus to get back on students, okay? I want this to be a safe and strong learning environment where the emphasis is on intellectual growth, critical thinking, problem solving. And as Daniel said earlier, I want the politics out of school, okay? I want kids to learn how to think, not what to think. I'm quite concerned about the change in the advocacy policy and I'd like to really look at that a little closer. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bieberz, you have 90 seconds.
Thank you. So the four Democrats here sitting before you have attended every Sorry, he's pointing at something. The four Democrats sitting here before you have attended every committee meeting since the fall. And all of us have been extremely concerned about the current sitting board members' comments about McCormack about the deprimated state of finance and facilities. And that is largely in part due to, as many people here said, the eight years without suitable support and maintenance that has been occurring. Money was taken from emergency funds, from the COVID relief funds and used improperly, direct, to balance that budget temporarily. But now we are behind the table and have a lot of catching up to do. Vermillion helps us a lot of money. Emergency funds were used for that. The cyber charter was said before last week, I was concerned about that. That's not actually true. We're actually net positive on returning students to Penridge. Karen Lefevere has successfully returned 125 students from cyber charter schools back into our district. I think that's wonderful. I'd like to continue doing that. I'm concerned about hearing right sizing because I know that means cutting staff and teachers. And I know that's going to have implications on the success of our grades. I would like to focus on, again, academics, special education, and keeping politics out of here. Thank you.
Thank you. I wasn't sure. We had talked about a rebuttal. Would anybody like to rebut? What I feel we can do is
I'd like an answer.
One from each, one from each party? Or everybody can have 30 seconds to rebut?
I'd like to have my 90 seconds to answer the question.
You have an answer? Can I skip over here?
Right.
Oh, I'm so sorry, sir. That is, well, you have 90 seconds for sure. Your moderator is not under control. I apologize. All right, go ahead.
Yeah, so I think one of the most pressing issues, right, I've spent a lot of time, I'm personally not, you know, close to 800 doors in the community. You're quite into over 1,000 people, right? I'm out in the community. I'm talking with other parents, with teachers. You know, I think first and foremost, two things come to mind. We need to focus on academics. And what is the best decision to be made for the students and the students in the district? And like Mr. Bonji Avani said, that there has to be a way to balance focusing on academics and then pairing that with the financial impacts that the district is under, right? No one wants to raise taxes, right? The cost of everything has gone up. Nobody wants to sit here and say, oh, we're going to raise taxes. I don't want my taxes raised, right? And I know a lot of people are saying, don't right-size the district. The enrollment is going down. That may be the case, but we're now rising in rank, right now in the top 25% of schools in Pennsylvania. To me, right sizing is code for we're going to cut jobs. But I think we need to do a better job at how are we going to attract some of these students back to the district? We have a lot of students that are going to cyber school. And that costs taxpayers money is going to places outside of the district. Let's spend time, let's bring them back. I think the current administration has brought back almost half a million dollars into the district.
Thank you. Again, my apologies, Mr. Trauber. So again, to the rebuttal, would everybody like a chance to rebut for 30 seconds? All right, then we will start back with Mr. Lefevere, if you would like 30 seconds, or you can, you can say no, thank you.
Yeah, I'll take 30 seconds. I won't really need 30 seconds. One thing that I wanted to rebut was Mr. McMullin's statement about rebuilding parental trust. I find it interesting that you raised that as a concern of yours, considering that you praised the contract that cost us 20% of our teachers in the district back in '23. I also am curious how that factors in that 44 different parents and teachers showed up that night to beg the board not to pass that contract, and they did it anyway. And you praised them, you called them warriors. I don't see how that is rebuilding trust in parents.
Thank you. Mr. Menary, would you like to respond? You have 30 seconds.
I will. I'll use my time.
Thank you. Mr. McMullin.
Yes, I'd like to speak to the state of the infrastructure, if you will. The previous board, the previous Republican board, inherited a $120 million deficit. They worked and were successful in completing all of the capital projects and still stayed within budget after that fact. They've got, set up, they had it set up, this board that's currently serving, all they had to do was maintain the ship. And they would have had a $12 million in the positive every year, annually, starting in 2029. It's currently at $6 million every year. In 2029, it would have been $12 million every year. There were $55 million in capital projects over the past 10 years, so old bones in the buildings, still like ceilings. It's a right area.
All right. Ms. Taylor, you have 30 seconds.
All I would say is just that the mismanagement of previous finances, to me, has been very short-sighted. The decisions I've made, I've seen previous board majorities make are in the immediate and they're reactive. And I want to see us being proactive. I want to see us not only planning for our children that are in the schools now, but our children's children, children's children who will leave these schools in the future as well. I think that is very important. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Russell.
It just was, what was that good before? We have spent $50 million over the past 10 years in capital improvements. That's not neglecting things that need to be approved upon. Additionally, I think the transparency was a big issue that was run upon two years ago. And I feel like things have become less transparent, so that's, that's as to parental trust again. We need to be more transparent and not be trying to search for policies that we don't know what is involved with and also make it harder for parents if they wanted to not have their child retaken from particular activity, having them opt out as opposed to opt in.
Thank you. Mr. Trauber.
Yeah, I think we just need to focus on long-term planning needs of the district. By attending the, you know, various committee meetings, it's become apparent that, you know, even though a few years ago, they may have invested millions of dollars in the capital improvements, there still is a huge need and we need to be able to keep our kids warm, safe, and dry. And we need to not be so short-sighted and we need to plan for that over the long term.
Thank you. Mr. Bonji Avani, you have 30 seconds.
Four of us up here will be school board directors. And I think we need to push forward. I don't think we need to go back and point fingers and blame. We need to find new ways to get better. And one of those focuses, again, back on the students, is academic excellence. We need to look at everything, okay? We need to get the right people to look at everything. But again, I really want to push forward.
Thank you. Mr. Bieberz, you have 30 seconds.
In the spirit of Mr. Bonji Avani's comment, I do want to look forward, agree. The ways I want to look forward are academics and rather than giving some, I want to give specifics on how we want to do that. Penridge Committee Alliance, the Democrats sitting here and the Democrats currently on the board have been able to deliver some incredible successes with improvement of academics. And that includes the rollout of foundations, which has cut our non-readers in half and returned us to the top 25% of schools in Pennsylvania. I think those results speak for themselves and what we can do.
Thank you. Our second question is, in the event of disagreements among board members leading to an impasse and heated discourse... among board members leading to an impasse and heated discourse, how would you help maintain civility and rational thinking to reach a consensus for the benefit of the students? Mr. Minieri, you will go first. You have 90 seconds.
Certainly. So, I think that's the importance of having a bipartisan board. Right now, the, right now, we're, the Penrich voters are facing the decision of, do you want an additional four people? And the Bush majority already controls the board. Or do you want four people to balance that conversation on the school board? There are four people on this, at this table tonight that will bring that balanced conversation. I think it is important in a district as big as Penrich that we have every, we have as many voices of the community represented. So, again, at the end of the day, we're not going to agree on everything. Nobody ever agrees on anything, everything, and anything. But it's important to ensure that in those conversations, that every voice, or as many voices as possible, can be represented. So I want to make sure that if elected, I would be representing not just a handful of voices, but all voices. And I believe that having that balanced approach to the board and maintaining civility as well as a calm head will ensure that we can make those decisions, even if some of us will disagree with you at the end of the day.
Thank you. Mr. McMullin, you have 90 seconds.
Thank you. To Mr. Minieri's comment, I'll just add on to that. I think we need a balanced board. If you have a single party occupying entire board, what you get is a rubber-stained echo chamber. And that's how we got into this, quite frankly. We need to be able to have a civil debate. We need to stop villainizing each other as a party, as an individual in general. It needs to stop and it's bad. We need to treat each other with grace and with civility. And with that will come progress that we all want to see. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Taylor, you have 90 seconds.
I think in these discussions, it's important to realize that none of us are specifically described by the letter that's next to our name. Throughout my life as a voter, I've been a registered Republican. I've been a registered independent. I've been a registered Democrat. It does not change the person that I am. And the person that I am is somebody who approaches others as members of my community, as members who want the best for our children and have the best intentions. Approaching discussions like that in my life, as well as in my career, have only seen me be able to succeed. That's how we build bridges, by having a discussion about the issue, not about who we think caused the issue, not about who's making it worse. It's about the issue. It's about the kids. And if we approach these discussions with that lens, that is how we create a strong and stable school district.
Thank you. Mr. Russell, you have 90 seconds.
One of the most important things, I think, in keeping civility alive is having good processes, good governance, is making good decisions. And sometimes the process itself is more important than the final decision. I think if people feel that they bought into the process, even though they may disagree on the outcome, they'll treat one another better. One of the best decisions I was a part of when I was serving on the school board was pursuing a new superintendent. That was a very difficult, challenging process. We were there sometimes till midnight, trying to figure, sort through the candidates. It was a long and arduous process. And we were not getting along as a board, you know? And we had difficulty. But the process was a really good process. We believed in it. Even though we may have had disagreements, the process was good. So we believed in the end result. So I think in order for us to come together, we may have disagreements on, you know, our perspectives. But if we have a good process, we'll be able to come together and make a good decision.
Thank you. Mr. Traeger, you have 90 seconds.
Yeah, I want to echo a little bit what Carly said with, you know, we're not defined with the letter that is behind our name. You know, one thing I have heard over and over repeatedly in the community is, they want to keep politics out of the school system. And I feel like that's what keeps happening. And that's what we're doing up here. You know, we may not agree. And there will be times when, you know, maybe there is an impact. And, you know, I think as long as you look at it in perspective, what is the best option, what's the best outcome for the children? That is, that needs to be our focus. You know, I, for the last 25 years, sorry, every day, I'm dealing with decisions across, it could be life and death for some individuals. And it's always, you know, I may not morally agree with the decision. But if that's the best decision for the person that we're talking about, then that's the decision we need to make. That's a board. We need to look at it at the mindset of, how does this best impact the students? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bon Giavani, you have 90 seconds.
I'd like to kind of agree with what Mr. Minieri said about a bipartisan board. I know what I'm getting into. If I'm elected on this board, I know that I'm going to be in a minority of people, okay? But I emphasize the word "people." We're all people, okay? Do you really want nine people on the board that are echoing the same thing? You need to be a great listener. I think I'm a great listener. Please don't ask my wife. But I think in other respects, I'm a pretty good listener. You need to have the difficult conversations. Difficult conversations lead to real solutions. But those conversations have to have respect and civility. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Beaver.
Yes, first thing that matters the most when we're talking about decision-making is showing up. That is what the four PCA members here have done. We actually have a better attendance record at committee meetings than two of the candidates that will be, two of the sitting board members that will be replacing. We show up. We're dedicated. Above that, I think what's really necessary for quality decision-making is data-based and relying on the evidence. Collecting data and then using that. I don't want to be swayed by an emotional anecdote. I want to see what are the facts? What can we best do? What are, and make a move forward based on that. Being a parent does mean that emotion factors into it. How can I best serve my student? How can I best serve our community? That matters. But how we're going to make those decisions is based on data and research. And that is, that is the most important thing to me in both my career and I think how we can make decisions moving forward for this community.
Thank you. Mr. LeFever, you have 90 seconds.
So to answer the question directly, listening, I agree with everybody who said that being able to have honest conversations with each other is how we find the common ground, to be able to make difficult decisions. You get asked boundaries. I did want to say something, though, that a school board is nonpartisan. So to sit here and say, you need to vote for me because we're currently in the minority, is absurd and wrong. You should be voting for people because they're the right person for the job, not because of what letter they have next to their name, not because of what color they wear, who they vote for, but because they are the right choice. That, to me, stands in stark contrast to the other things that were said by Mr. Minieri. We need to stop villainizing each other. I absolutely agree. I love every weekend, on Saturday, knocking on doors with people who are not the same party as me. And we have plenty of conversations where we agree on the vast majority of things. Because that's what matters, is talking to our community and representing our community. We should be asking blame on each other. We should be focusing on solutions. And process is great, but process only gets you so far. Process only works so long as you have the right people in place to hold that process and display respect for each other. Respect and willingness to find common ground. That is what's going to get us through all of the difficult conversations and meetings that we have coming up.
Thank you. I think we'll move on to the next question.
I'd like to respond to that, please.
Okay, go ahead. You have 30 seconds.
Thank you. Mr. LeFever, with all due respect, you four chose to run with the current board majority, the Penrich Community Alliance brand. So I do find it interesting that you're saying you're not interested in labels and you're not interested in branding us. But yet, also in your literature, you call the four of us that are up here political activists and political extremists. So I do find that interesting that you bring up that you're not interested in villainizing and labeling the people up here, but yet you label the four of us based off of limited interactions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. LeFever, I'll let you respond if you'd like.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd love to. So, I appreciate that, actually. That is a fair thing to point out, Dan. I, not to be in a biggie, it's LeFever. It's okay. But I am running with a campaign group so that we can try to get elected. Because running honestly, running with a group of people, you share your resources, you share a message, you share a common goal. Our goal is to get on the board so that we can affect positive change. That is what our goal is. We are not here to say we agree with everything everybody else currently on the board has said.
Thank you, sir. Okay, I think we will move on to the next question. And this is for the questions from the audience. Again, I remind you that they need to pertain to the job of school board member and be addressed to all the candidates. I also want to let you know that we have had a lot of questions and some of them do overlap. So I'm doing my best to kind of blend them if they pertain to the same subject. We have quite a few questions on a school board and curriculum. And I think, let's see. Who should be involved in the development of the curriculum and for what reasons? Do you advocate any changes to the curriculum at any level? If so, what changes do you advocate? And I believe, Mr. McMullin, you go first. You have 90 seconds.
It's a really good question. I think the teachers that have to teach the curriculum should be involved in it. Coming from an IT background, I can't even begin to tell you how many times I've been in one projects where the salesman sold the sizzle. And my company bought it. And then they said, here's all the pieces, just make it work. And here's the deadline, and it was yesterday. So, I never felt that was fair. And I wouldn't expect a teacher to think that that's fair. I think the teachers should absolutely be involved. And I also think that everybody, theoretically, maybe, you know, every three years, every five years, you should go out and just do a true-up to see what information is no longer accepted, what's been disproven, and just keep everything on a nice even keel. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Taylor, you have 90 seconds to respond.
I first wanted to just say that I think Mr. McMullin's answer is interesting, given that his public comments around implementing the Vermillion contract were not only positive, but incredibly supportive in entering that contract. It removed curriculum involvement from the teachers. It lost us 20% of our teachers and staff. So I am concerned about his true feelings around curriculum based on that answer, as he has not recounted any of his public comments from that time. As far as curriculum management goes, I think it's important to trust our administrators and our teachers to create a curriculum that allows our children to succeed in varied pathways. I don't think a school board should be dictating. A school board is there to hold the administrators accountable for doing their duty and for administering the curriculum in a reasonable way that makes sense, that empowers our teachers to teach our children the things that they need to be successful adults in the world. This is something that I specifically worked on in my job as a lab manager. I was implementing policies for the lab technicians to run an asset that ran for 23 hours. So efficiency and empowering them to be able to focus on their jobs and not worry about if there are legal, if there are legal problems with their teaching. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Russell, you have 90 seconds.
One of the most important things we need to remember as directors is that we don't want to get into micromanaging. Our job is to hire the superintendent and to give him direction or her direction concerning where the board needs, where we want to go as a district. And then let the district superintendent put those resources around him or her that can get there. And our job is, and I've used this illustration before, the board sets up guardrails. If you think you're traveling in a car, we're not driving the car. The district superintendent is driving the car. But we tell the district superintendent where we want that car to go and then let them get to that destination. If that destination is, hey, we want our scores to be better. We want our kids to graduate, higher graduation. We accept those benchmarks. But then we hire somebody with the skill set to be able to accomplish that. But then as the school board, we're the guiding wheels. If that starts to go off, and if it was the curriculum that somebody felt was too dark to, whatever, too much material was not balanced, then we, as the school board, can say, hey, district superintendent, balance the curriculum. Get it back into balance. So that our kids, again, aren't one-sided in their understanding of the world, but have both views. And I think there's a great teacher in our social studies program. And she said, if you don't present both sides, I'm going to present the other side. So that's what we want as a school board. We want to make sure that both sides are being presented. It's said here before. We want our kids to know not what to think, but how to think, you know, how to process information so that they can decide. So that's the important part. We don't want to get into micromanaging. We want to set the direction, but allow the district superintendent to hire the people around them that will enable us to get there.
Thank you. Mr. Traeger, you have 90 seconds, sir.
It's nice to see that we can all agree right now that the curriculum needs to be in the hands of the teachers. It needs to be in the hands of the curriculum supervisors. You know, a few short years ago, that was not the case. And, you know, we wanted to go and just open it and contract and rewrite the curriculum. I think it needs to be, you know, like Mr. Russell said, right? We hold the superintendent accountable. It's up to him to steer the ship. The curriculum supervisors need to be the ones that are reviewing the curriculum, making sure that the curriculum is doing what it's meant to be, that we are seeing the positive outcomes that the board wants, wants to see, that everybody wants to see. And I think part of the question was about reviewing how often the curriculum should be reviewed. Dr. Bloom, who's new to the district this year, did a great presentation a couple of weeks ago on a five-year review plan that she set out. And, you know, I think it's a great idea that, you know, each year, something new is being reviewed. Everything is in a constant five-year review plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bon Giavani, you have 90 seconds to respond.
I want to agree with Mr. Russell. I don't think a school board should micromanage. Board members should not be writing curriculum. I've written a lot of curriculum in my day. The best way that I've always found to write curriculum The best way that I've always known to write curriculum and to work with curriculum is by committee. You put administrators and you put the most important people, the people on the frontlines, the teachers on those committees. They have discussions, they have conversations, okay? And it's never to be put in one person's hand. So I really agree with the committee approach on that. And also, as Mr. Traugr said, there's an evaluation process that's being put into place by Jen Bloom, who's an administrator at the district. And it's a five-year process. It actually came from my old district. And I can tell you, it really works. Yeah. And one thing I'd like to add to that is, I think sometimes we need to consider when you evaluate curriculum, I think you need to include the most important piece, the students. How did they feel that one was taught? And take the input from the students. We did that in New Hope-Solberg. And it worked, it really gave us a lot of information. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Beavernets, you have ninety seconds.
Yes, thank you. Echoing what many people here said is, trust the specialists, trust the experts. I was a licensed teacher, I was in that field developing curriculum. Again, I became specialized in behavior analysis, but during that time, I did know that, while I was a new classroom teacher, I was very, very interested in how best we could come together to develop our curriculum. Again, echoing what was already said is, Bon Giavoni, Traugr, and myself were at the meeting where Dr. Bloom did roll out that five-year plan, and I think that's brilliant. It's frequent enough to keep us updated with current times, but not enough that, sorry, not so frequent that it's going to completely overwhelm teachers. We're going to be having to roll out a new product every year. Lastly, I agree with Mr. Russell's point of view, which is, we should not be here to micromanage, we should be here to trust the experts. And that's a little concerning because the Vermillion contract, which still leaves a bad taste in, I think, everyone in this community's mouth. McMullin outright supported, and Russell, who was on the board, voted no. So I do respect that you wanted to keep experts in our buildings creating the curriculum, and I would like to see that continue. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. LaFever, you have ninety seconds.
So again, I'm going to start by answering the question directly. I absolutely agree with everything that Mr. Russell said, Mr. Traugr said, Mr. Beaver Bon Giavoni said. As I mentioned in my opening, I have come from a family of teachers. So I have been there, many late nights when they're writing their curriculum. I have assisted in writing curriculums as a teacher's assistant. We should be trusting the people we hired to do the job that we hired them to do. We should also be checking them and making sure that they're delivering on those promises. If we set a goal for them, have we achieved it? If we haven't achieved it, then why? Just like we said in the previous question, that doesn't come down to blame. You didn't meet your quota and now you're fired. But what can we do to correct? How can we fix it? What do you need from us? What can we as a board supply to you so that you are able to accomplish this goal and uplift our entire community together?
Thank you. Mr. Menary, you have ninety seconds.
Sure, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I do certainly agree with the idea of a balanced approach, like Mr. Russell and many others have already approached. But I definitely want to take something that Mr. Bon Giavoni spoke to, and that is the student input. I know when we're writing curriculum, it may look great on paper, and it may look great to the teachers, it may look good to the supervisors, to the district staff. But ones at the end of the day, they're actually having to process that information and to learn that information as the students. So I certainly would hope that, and if elected, we certainly make sure that, as well as ensuring that all stakeholders, whether it's teachers, staff, or curriculum supervisors, are writing and preparing the curriculum, that students, or at least a student, would be allowed to give his or her perspective, because they're the ones at the end of the day that have to learn the curriculum and hopefully are passed the exam at the end of class. So I certainly encourage that to be done if elected. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll go on to the next question. All right, then we'll have another rebuttal as well as your. All right, go ahead, you have thirty seconds.
Yes, I would like to speak to my previous statement years ago in favor of Vermillion. It was in favor of the tune-up that I was just speaking about. I believe Mr. Traugr mentioned every five years. I had not seen any type of true-up where you do, you do trust your experts, but there's no problem with bringing in outside experts and see what they've got to say. And that's what I, you know, brought my head, was the timeline in which the social studies curriculum was to be delivered. And as Mr. Russell stated previously, it was an issue with the process. The process wasn't a good one.
Thank you. Do we have a Democrat who might like to do a rebuttal?
I don't think we're about it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Taylor. You have thirty seconds.
I'm certainly in favor of seeking outside counsel when necessary, if we don't have appropriate resources within the district. However, those outside counselors need to be properly vetted. The person who was implementing the Vermillion contract was not even qualified to be a teacher in the state of Pennsylvania. So sure, I'm okay with outside contractors if we need it, but in this specific case, there was no reason anybody should be supporting that contract.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to the next question. What strategies other than salaries should the district pursue to attract and retain high-quality teachers and staff and thereby hopefully increasing morale? We will start with Ms. Taylor.
Primarily, I think Pen Ridge's issue in dealing with retention of teachers and teachers being satisfied in their job is still a holdover from what happened in 2023. Teachers are still wary to trust the district with their career. They're wary of working in the district and how that might apply to how they're seen by their teacher peers. I personally have many friends who are teachers, some who are employees of this district, as well as surrounding districts, and word travels fast, and they are wary of coming to this district. I have seen programs lately by attending meetings where teachers are feeling better about being respected within the district. We're asking for their input on curriculum. We're looking for ways to implement trainings that are specifically useful to them and directly apply to their jobs as teachers. I think that we still need to be more clear with our policies with teachers, ensure that they are confident in acting on things that they handle in the classroom, such as issues with, you know, between students, handling how to teach a specific subject. We need more guidance on that. So I really want to bring that to a board, try to make sure that teachers feel supported, that they're heard, and that they're well-resourced, most importantly.
Thank you. Mr. Russell, you have ninety seconds.
Yeah, I think in addition to having proper compensation that mirrors the surrounding areas, it's also important for the teachers to feel respected and feel like they're valued. But I do think that that's a two-way street in some ways, too, because the parents need to feel respected and valued as well. And I think if they can both feel that way, then you're going to have a great symbiotic, some sort of relationship that works well together. I think if you have parents that want to be active in helping their students when they're not at school, the teachers will appreciate that. I think every teacher wants to have families that are supportive of the learning environment that's created in the school. And so to the extent that we can attract good teachers, we also need to be attractive to good families and have students that want to be engaged and want to learn. And I think that's the key.
Thank you. Mr. Traugr, you have ninety seconds.
Thank you. To retain them, we need to show that we respect them as teachers, we respect them in the district, we make them feel valued, right? We need to work at rebuilding their trust. I think our actions always speak louder than words. You know, one thing that has come up is communication. I think we need to do a better job with communicating to teachers within the schools themselves. I think we also need to give them the tools and the education that they need, so they feel comfortable addressing issues as they come up in the classroom and not making them feel paralyzed that they don't know what to do or it's not really a big issue. We need to educate them on how to deal with these diagnoses as they come up, and again, make them feel respected and valued. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bon Giavoni, you have ninety seconds.
Being a teacher is tough. I know that firsthand. And I can tell you that when I had strong administration that were fair and consistent, I may not have agreed with them, but they were fair and consistent, it made for a much better workplace, okay? But teaching is always going to be tough, there's always going to be things pulling at you everywhere. You have to make teachers feel valued and supported. You have to make sure that teachers know you're listening to them. And that's through having very good administrators.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I also just want to remind everybody.
Can I finish?
You can, go ahead. I just want to remind, you have some phones that are standing up, if you could put them down if you're just texting. Sir, right in the middle, thank you. I apologize, go ahead.
That's okay. I'm a teacher, I'm used to being interrupted, so. If I don't keep my sense of humor, I'm going to go crazy, so. Another important aspect, as I was talking about, is your relationship amongst teachers, okay? You need to build on that. That word gets out, that this is a good place to be. I want Pen Ridge to be a good place. I know there's a good foundation there. I have connections with teachers, I know there's a good foundation. How do you get around with that? You have in-service programs where team-building activities are involved. You can have team-building activities in a building, amongst just the teachers in that building, or even you can cross with the middle schools and the elementarys. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Beavernets, you have ninety seconds.
I want to start off with, I really appreciate this question, because I think I agree with every answer that's been given so far, regardless of side. Everyone has some really great sentiments. I also agree, like Mr. Russell said, that compensation is important. I know that New Hope-Solberg is one of the best-paying districts in this county, and I think that's a reason for Mr. Bon Giavoni's long tenure there. I think something that we can physically do and actively do is increase the supports they have. In talking with the classroom teachers from Pen Ridge, I have heard many, several times, that rebuilding after so many teachers were driven away has brought in such a new influx of staff. And while those staff are talented, they may not know all the roles and responsibilities they have, and there are some gaps in how best they can support teachers. And so those supports that are going directly to the classroom teachers are not being fulfilled in every single capacity, not because the staff aren't qualified, but because the staff are still new here. And so building that literacy and focusing on keep retaining our staff is going to be really important to fill those gaps, to make sure that the teachers are best supported so that they can best support the students. Thank you.
And thank you. Mr. LaFever, you have ninety seconds.
Whoever submitted this question, I would thank you for saying, besides the obvious salary, because, again, coming from a family of teachers, nobody gets in teaching for the money, regardless of where you live. It's very much something that someone does because you feel calling, you feel a passion, you feel that's something that you need to do. And I have to say that I agree with everything that has been said so far. We should be communicating clearly with our teachers and make sure that they know that they are supported, that we do have their back, that when things do go wrong, because they inevitably do, that it's not a matter of life and death, we can handle it, we can deal with it, we can approach it and solve the problem together. I think that one piece that has not been mentioned yet is atmosphere. Beyond the obvious pay benefits, so on and so forth, is the atmosphere. We need to make sure that we are creating an atmosphere where the goal is learning, the goal is our students, and the goal is our community, and making sure that we are able to have the highest and best impact on our community. Because like Mr. Russell said, that is only going to make the rest of us rise.
Thank you. Mr. Menary, you have ninety seconds.
Yeah, so I certainly agree that communication is essential to the building of a trust relationship. And if I may shout out my dad, I've seen this in his leadership roles as a member of our church as a vestry. It's the importance of getting to know people, where they're at, remembering things about them, and communicating what needs to be communicated, you know, in a timely and effective manner. I think that, yes, the previous board has not necessarily been great with its deep relationships with its teachers, I will certainly not be afraid to mention that. And that's part of, again, why I decided to run. I believe especially as someone who is a recent graduate and somebody who still knows a lot of the teachers that are still teaching at the district and has a good relationship with many of those same teachers, that if elected to the board, I could bring that relationships, or those relationships goes to the board. And I want them to know that they have a board director that, at the end of the day, we may not agree on everything, but I certainly want you to feel heard, I want you to feel listened, and I certainly want your input when it comes to making important decisions. So again, communication is key, and so is building that relationship of trust. Thank you.
And thank you. Mr. McMullin, you have ninety seconds.
Thank you. This has got to be the easiest question I can last on, because pretty much everything that's been said, I agree with. I think it's the one question that everyone up here really just agrees. I hundred percent agree with clear policies. When you know as an employee that the rules are clear and they're enforced consistently, then it makes for a comfortable environment. And as to the answer about the atmosphere, I think that lends to the atmosphere. And when you're comfortable where you're at, you like to stay. And then you talk to other teachers, and you tell them about how wonderful this is. And that's really what we're all known for, right?
Thank you. I think we're good to move on then.
Can I have a rebuttal?
Sure. Who has a rebuttal?
I just wanted to address, someone had said that I taught at New Hope-Solberg High School, and that's where I did teach, and it was one of the highest-paying school districts in the county. I didn't teach there because of the money. If you look at my record, I never made it to the top of the salary scale. I taught there because I love teaching. And if it wasn't for COVID, I probably still would be teaching now. So it's not always the money. Sometimes it's about what you're there for and how good the kids are, how good you get along with other teachers and administrators.
Thank you. And do we have a Democrat who would like to rebut anything? Thank you. Our next question. Will you lower taxes now that enrollment is down and housing building is up? And we will start with Mr. Russell. You have ninety seconds.
Yeah, part of the problem that I had with the tax increase was that we didn't know what the alternative was. So for the board majority that campaigned on transparency, I think when you make a decision, you want to say, well, what's the alternative? So what would have happened if we did not raise taxes? No one knows. We don't know. Maybe we would have had to raise taxes. But I don't know what the alternative was. What program policy would have had to be cut? What, how are our teacher-to-student ratios, knowing that we're a thousand students down? How's our administrators-to-student ratio? Is that out of whack? I mean, it would have been nice for someone to have that discussion, but no one raised that issue. So I think before we go one way or the other, before we raise taxes or before we lower taxes, somebody needs to look into, well, what's the basis behind that? The one thing that we had, one thing I didn't realize until I was campaigning, was that every home sold in the district, a half a percent of that sale price goes to the school district. So a half a percent of every home that's sold in our district goes to the school district. In addition to the tax rate, every new home that's coming in, we're putting up with the increase in the volume of bringing in population growth, which is fine, I think it's great for our community. But you think that would be offset by not raising our taxes then? Because that increases the tax base. We shouldn't have to increase the tax rate. We don't live in a district that's confined by space, meaning we can't build it out any further. You look, there's all sorts of building going up within the district. So the thinking is, our tax revenue has increased every year. We can do that without raising taxes, or at least we should be able to, without the tax rate being increased.
Thank you. Mr. Traugr, you have ninety seconds.
I think the first thing we have to look at with taxes is, what are the alternatives? You know, I think there are some things that we have to agree on that we will not touch. And we should not be touching anything that relates to lowering the academic standards that we've had, that we've had over the last couple of years, that have helped the rankings come up into the twenty-five percent of Pennsylvania. We have to look at, not look at programs that will cut extraperricular activities. You know, I think there's ways to get revenue to come back into the district before we look at cutting, lowering taxes. You know, like I've said before, with the amount of students that are leaving the district go out to the cyber academies, it's a lot of money that's leaving the district that can come back into the district, find out why are they leaving? Let's bring them back in. The district has done a good job to get that back into the budget this year. I think we can look at some other contracts that the district has with sending students for multiple reasons, you know, and bringing some of those services back into the district, sort of not having to pay the student, pay to have students go out to other schools outside the district.
Thank you. Mr. Bon Giavoni, you have ninety seconds.
I certainly want to agree with Mr. Traugr and Mr. Russell on their points. Those are all true. The tough thing is, I'm not on the board right now, so I can't give you specifics as what I would, as what I would look at. I mentioned previously, starting with a zero-based budget as opposed to starting on last year's budget and building on that, that might be something we could look at. I talked about the educational foundation funds, where there were partnerships, again, with local businesses and people that donate to that, and other school districts that built them up into millions of dollars, which would be nice to have. And that also can always go back to the kids. I think, as Mr. Traugr said, we've got to keep educational excellence there, we've got to focus on academics with respect to the taxpayer. So I think we need to look at, are there any other alternatives? And again, not being part of the board and not being privy to those discussions, I can't give you any specifics there, but I can guarantee you that I will have those conversations if I'm on the board.
Thank you. Mr. Beavernets, you have ninety seconds.
Thank you. I think some great questions were brought up about the current board and whether, why taxes were raised, if there were other things that could have been done. Again, we've attended all the finance meetings. During those, our CEO, Chief Operating, Sean Dover, Officer, thank you, Sean Dover, and I don't mean to throw him under the bus here, has given some amazing presentations and really came to the same conclusions. And if we were going to, I'll go back to the previous question, trusting the experts, our chief financial expert was looking at the numbers and brought to the board several revisions on what could have been done. And I encourage you, if you're interested in this, to go back and look at those presentations, because the teachers requested additional staffing supports, and the current board weighed that and said, we have to, we have to focus on lowering taxes. The bus depot requested eight new buses, and instead they were able to provide one. And these are things that the current board, and again, I'm not on the current board, but these are things that they did to cut, to cut non-essential, non-academic programming to best suit the tax base here. So I do think, if attending the finance meetings, you would see that decisions are, difficult decisions are being made to use all the time. What I would like to do in the future is increase grant rating opportunities. I think grants are an amazing way to increase budgeting and finding essentially free money for doing the excellent work that we're already doing.
Thank you. Mr. LaFever, you have ninety seconds.
Now it's my turn not to beat a dead horse, because I agree with everything that everybody has said as far as finding ways to return students to our district, so that we are not spending money to send students out of the district, bringing them back into our hands so that we can use it for our district. bringing them back into our hands so that we can use it for our district. One thing that I do want to add, though, is interesting, but a couple of times it has been said that no alternatives were discussed when they were discussed rather extensively. I was at that meeting where lots of different things, Dan just rattled on, Mr. Beavonets just rattled off a couple. One other suggestion that was made was to reopen teacher contracts, right after they had just been agreed upon and solved, solved. So a lot of alternatives were thrown up there. Now, as far as whether or not I would lower taxes, like Mr. Bon Giovanni said, I don't know. I need to see more, I need to get deeper, and I need to be on the board, because I don't know everything that the current board knows. Once I'm there, then we can have that conversation in a much more meaningful way than making promises I may or may not be able to live up to.
Thank you. Mr. Maneri, you have ninety seconds.
So I agree, especially as somebody who's not currently on the board, it is tough to make those decisions about raising or lowering taxes. But I think a principle that I hope everybody would agree on is to be good stewards of the taxpayer money. And I just don't see that with this tax increase. The money, it's not a question of whether or not the money is there. It is there. Our base revenue, as Mr. Russell stated, is going up. People are moving into the district. So it's not a question of we need more money. The money is there, it's how we're spending it and where is it going to. And I think that respectfully with this tax increase, I just didn't see that. And I don't think a lot of people see that, as I've talked to many people. And especially as a young person who is trying to save up enough money to buy a home, and the housing market unfortunately is still rather a tough one. And, you know, it may be a couple hundred dollars, and it may not seem like a lot to many people, but it is a lot to people like myself who are still trying to pay off those college loans, who are still trying to save enough money, even just to rent somewhere. So at the end of the day, I wouldn't, I need to be on the board, I would hope to be on the board to see exactly if that really was necessary, but quite frankly, I just didn't see it.
Thank you. Mr. McMullin, you have ninety seconds.
Thank you. As a lot was already said originally on Mr. Russell, his point, you know, with the tax base increase, we'll have new homes, we've all seen the developments going in. A half percent for every single home sold, that was a new one, as he mentioned previously, that we didn't really find out about till just recently. But again, the point is, there was no dialogue, there was no transparency. And that's what this keeps coming back to. And Mr. Bon Giovanni stated, I think that that's a really great, a great idea to look at, is your budget concept. Again, none of us are actually on the board, so we can't give you specifics. But I mean, we could definitely look into lowering the taxes in 2029, when we have the positive twelve million. That could be on the table as well. And I'd just like to state, because it's been brought up several times, I have a slide on, all of the board and committee meetings are live streams, so just because I wasn't sitting in the chair next to somebody doesn't mean I wasn't in attendance with me. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Taylor, you have ninety seconds.
I would first challenge the assertion that attending the meetings via livestream is not an acceptable way to be fully informed on what's going on within the school board. I was at these meetings where they discussed whether or not taxes need to be raised, where none of my opponents were. And I know for a fact that the livestream malfunctioned in two of those meetings, where it was inaudible or not working. So not being present there physically, you missed out on the explanation of why taxes need to be raised. You missed out on the board members working together to flush out ideas on how to minimize the tax burden. None of us want our taxes raised. We're all residents here. It's not something that I would ever put on the top of the list of things that I want to implement in this district. However, we are seeing that home building is slowing down, home sales are slowing down. With our population decreasing, we've seen class sizes grow smaller. There is clear evidence that not only do small class sizes encourage better graduation rates, it also encourages physical health, mental health, and general success in the world. There is a large study conducted, starting in the nineteen eighties, following students moving up through their lives, and it concluded that small class sizes are important. So when talking about tax increases and tax burdens, we need to consider the importance of student experience there.
Thank you. Would anybody like to have a thirty-second response? Go ahead, Mr. McMullin.
There's five new developments being built within the town library. This is a school building we're shipping right now. So there's no sign of it slowing down. Every time I turn around, there's new signs, you know, ten new single-family homes starting in the seven-hundred thousands, a hundred and fifty townhomes or condos going in and starting at the high four-hundred thousand. So I don't see the slowdown. I don't know if you do, but I certainly do not.
All right. And would any of the Democrats, Mr. Beavonets?
To Mr. McMullin's point, I don't think I can effectively debate this. Again, the person that you should talk to is Sean Dober. He did explain that in the past two years, all that building and all that movement has tapered off. And while you see it, you feel it, that's your perspective. But Mr. Dober, who is looking at the numbers and crunching it and doing the very best he can to balance this budget, has explained to us over and over again that it simply wasn't possible and that revenue is not increasing with inflation.
Thank you. All right, we will move on to the next question. What is something you believe the school district can do to improve or start doing to assist in getting private school students to return to the district? And Mr. Trogger, you are the first, you have ninety seconds.
So there's been a focus recently in the district of doing this sort of outreach already with the cyber students. They've held two open houses on Pen Ridge's cyber program. They've also done a lot of outreach to the students that are, you know, in various charter schools, private schools, on the why. And I think we need to find out, what is the reason that the students or the parents are choosing to send their kids to private schools or to charter schools outside of our program? And we need to build upon them and take a hard look at those answers. And what do we need to do to attract them back into the district?
Thank you. Mr. Bon Giovanni, you have ninety seconds.
The Pen Ridge Cyber School, I watched a demonstration on it and I have information on it. It's a really good thing, and they're really doing a great job trying to bring those cyber charter kids back into the district. The state money, or the state that's determined the amount of money that leaves our district and goes to these cyber charter schools, is out of whack. And we're really fighting with that, with Congress and things like that, to get that changed. The numbers are really, really high. So I got to commend Pen Ridge for really putting together a great cyber program to bring those kids back. The other piece in terms of getting kids back into the schools, I think you need to focus on, of course, academic excellence. But you need to have Pen Ridge as a safe place. I want it to be a safe place for all the biological females that are in that building. I want it to be a safe place for all the biological males that are in that building. Okay? Some people have pulled their kids out because they don't feel it's safe. And I think we need to think about that. Okay? Obviously, we can offer more programs and obviously keeping that within the tax constraints. Okay? But I think we need to make kids, and I'm talking about all kids, need to feel safe in that building. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Beavonets, you have ninety seconds.
Yes, so again, Pen Ridge Cyber Academy has done an incredible job at bringing over a hundred and twenty-five students that were in charter schools back into our whole program. And they do that by providing a better experience than what the cyber charters were able to provide. Why are they able to do that? Not because they have additional funding, because you better believe the cyber charters are leading us dry with the amount of money they are able to steal from us. While we're on that subject, I would like to hear Dan Maneri's point on few supports, House Bill fifteen hundred, which caps cyber charter funds going out. Interested in hearing what that says. But cyber charter students are returning to us because we provide a better program. We provide a more in-touch program. I do not think that starting cultural arts is a good way to bring back students to our district. I don't think it worked three years ago, and I don't think starting it again is going to help. I think the best way to bring students back here is to continue to show excellence like we have. Cyber charters are able to siphon an incredible amount into lobbying, lobbying money and advertising money to deliver no results for the students they support. So showing that we are able to provide a better experience and better education for those students is what's going to bring them home.
Thank you. Mr. LaFever, you have ninety seconds.
You've gotten this answer multiple times, so I'm not going to keep repeating it. The quality of our education is the number one thing, to make sure that we are returning students to our district and getting people to move into our district. Everybody buys a house where they know things are nice. I moved from Northeast Village when I moved back up here. And it's part of the huge reason of why. My daughter was coming of school age, and I wanted her to be in a good district, and I knew this was a good district. We lost a lot of students to instability. I know that from knocking on doors, talking to people. Some people saying things like, I will never send my child to Pen Ridge ever again because of all the things that happened a few years ago. And that's not something that we should be doing again. We should not be playing projects with our students' lives, with our children's lives. I would like to better understand how we're supposed to keep all students safe when only two specific groups of students are mentioned. However, by Mr. Bon Giovanni, you can't single out only two groups for protection and then say that you want to protect everybody. It's either everybody, or it's only a select few. And we should be making sure, once again, that by focusing on our education and not on the rhetoric that was just spoken up here on the stage, that we are actually doing those things, that we are making sure that every student, whether they are where they're from, how they feel, how they were born, are protected and feel that they are in a safe place as long as they are within our doors.
Thank you. Mr. Maneri, you have ninety seconds.
So I figured at some point that what I do outside of this would be brought up, and to my surprise, what my opponents did. So first off, just in case we are confused on the naming here, my name is Daniel Maneri, and I am running for Pen Ridge School Board, not my boss, State Senator Jared Coleman. I feel like that needs to be clear, that I am not a clone of my boss. I have my own separate thoughts and my own separate beliefs, separate of my job. I would not be on this stage writing for school board or on this podium tonight if I didn't care about the well-being of this district and the well-being of its students. So I am disappointed that, again, it is seen that I am viewed as just nothing more than a tool and a puppet for my boss. That is just simply not true. I'm my own separate person. So I'm glad that I had the chance just to clarify that to the audience tonight. Again, talking about the Pen Ridge Cyber Charter School, I think it does do, I'm glad that ours district is, again, communicating with those families and with those parents. And I do believe, like everybody else says, that we need to continue those communications and continue to provide those skills to bring those students back in. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McMullin.
Thank you. A lot of the points are debated, but I think it warrants restating. I think in order to bring the families back, what you have to do is reach out to them personally, reach out to the disenfranchised families that left the district over the phantom locker room issues, as well as the advocacy policy being removed. Again, they want education over activism. It's a very simple concept. And again, it comes down to better policies and the trust relationship between the administration and the board. The board's job is to set the policy, and it's the administration's job to follow that policy. And as long as you have that working relationship between the two bodies, this is a real slam dunk.
Thank you. Ms. Taylor, you have ninety seconds.
For the most part, I would agree with everything said on this issue. The only thing I would add is that from knocking doors and speaking to members of the community in all parties, the biggest takeaway that I've seen is that people want a nonpartisan school board. They don't want, it seems to me that people don't want an extreme on either side. Tying yourself to a partisan issue, getting up here and saying, you should vote for me so there are five Democrats and four Republicans on the board, is not a reason to convince someone to vote for you, specifically at this local level. We are all community members. We are all dynamic people who subscribe to a wide variety of ideals. The things I hear from parents on why they pulled their kids from the district are needs of cyber learning and hybrid learning. A lot of parents didn't even realize that we had a cyber program that could be administered in a hybrid way, which is very attractive to modern parents and the way modern parenting works. We also have had issues with managing bullying within the district for all types of students. We've had an unclear process. I think we need to focus on implementing things such as restorative justice to help our students and our parents and our families understand each other and come to an understanding of approaching things with a kind heart. And we can be that district. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody like to do a response to their respective? Oh, Mr., so close to the end here, I'm sorry. Mr. Russell, you have ninety seconds.
Thank you. The thing that I've seen is the hypocrisy, I think, is why parents are saying they've had enough, and they're just going to move their kids to private school. I mean, I can send my kids to private school. I choose not to. I choose, I believe in the public school system. I'm an advocate for it. I think it's important to have a process where all of us get educated. But there are points where you say, well, wait a second. You know, how can we say that we're accepting of all students? But then, if you were at the board meeting last night, I think only one person was on the posting ticket was at the board meeting last night, you heard somebody say a really bigoted statement about a Christian school. So are Christians okay to say they're not part of the inclusive part of where we are? If you have an idea that, hey, there are only two sexes, are you not welcome in the school? Or are we welcoming to all students? Because the people who don't feel welcomed are leaving. And we tend to make rules about very small percentage of people in the school and then alienate the bulk of the majority of them. So I think we really need to check that, because it was outrageous last night for someone to make such a comment. But if it had been made in any other setting, we'd be up in office, and there'd be, you know, there'd be people protesting and everything else. So I really think that the issue, the bathroom issue, that we have a policy where you could go based upon your gender, that had driven people away, and the removal of the advocacy policy, that was an important policy, that you don't go into a classroom and have a bulletin board decorated for one particular agenda, and then feel like if I don't ascribe to that, that I'm somehow alienated from that teacher. I don't want to know what that teacher's position is on a certain social issue.
Thank you. Anybody with like a thirty-second response? We'll just start down here. Mr. LaFever?
So just to answer the question, because it was proposed, if you know, a data statement is not acceptable in any context. If something was said about a religious group, then it's not okay. If something was said about a minority group, then it's not okay. Part of making sure that everybody feels safe is, I mean, everybody. And part of Carly talking about restorative justice is to make sure that we take the people who are involved in these things and we say, this is why it's not okay. You can have the opinions you have, you can have the beliefs you have, but you cannot inflict them upon somebody else.
Thank you. Do I have a Republican who would like to say something?
I agree you shouldn't inflict it on somebody else. You know, that should be the baseline. We don't want our teachers conflicting their opinion on someone else. They're here to teach, you know, teach my children math, teach my children how to read, teach my children the sciences. I don't want them teaching about the social issue that they have a particular agenda towards. Present both sides then. If, or else, an alternative would be, and I don't think the school would be good with it, if you think about it this way, say, we do right to lightning. Would the school be okay with a right to life bulletin board and have that put in there? The people would be outraged, but yet it's okay to have a pride mark. You know, I don't understand the hypocrisy associated with that.
Thank you. I think we should, these are very good issues. Would anybody else like to say something? Carly, you have thirty, I'm sorry. Ms. Taylor, you have thirty seconds.
Thank you. I would just address the fact that the difference between celebrating our students and celebrating a choice of an adult's body or reproductive system is two different things. The existence of the LGBTQ plus community is not something that we should ignore or shun. We should celebrate all of our students for the vibrance that they bring. We have a gay-straight alliance in our school, which our teachers support, our students support. And we should be allowed to support that.
Anybody else? All right, Mr. McMullin?
To Carly's point, we should celebrate all the students. And in doing so, we should have the same set of rules for all the students. When you start making specific policies for a very small fraction, that's when it becomes less than all the students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to give all the other candidates a chance to respond, since it's a hot topic. Mr. Beavonets, did you have any other things to say?
Yeah, I think-
Yeah, I think all of us started this presentation with, "We should be focused on academics, not culture wars," and I think many of us are diving back into that. I would like to focus back on academics. How can we improve the educational capabilities for this district? I would speak simply based on publicity. Three years ago, we were making the national news for some pretty...there are some things. For the last two years, it's been quiet. The culture wars have subsided, and that's not because one side won or the other side won. I think we found a balance, and we were able to focus on things more important than a very small fraction, or who's going where, but how we can improve academics for our students. That's what we should focus on.
Thank you. Mr. Maneri, do you have a response?
I...I'm glad Mr. Beaverton...
Yeah, Beaverton, so that's right.
Okay, Mr. Beaverton agrees. I would rather be focusing on education and not activism, but it is a little hard to do that when we had a policy which prohibited teachers from using their positions to be political activists and to push these certain political agenda down their students' throats. I agree. Let's talk about curriculum. Let's talk about ensuring that our students are prepared to face life after graduation, regardless of their path in life. It's hard to do that with a policy that allowed that to happen, as revealed. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Traubert, you have thirty seconds.
Again, I think we need to bring the focus back to academics and creating a safe environment for all of our students. I think we need to teach all of our students how to be respectful of each other. And while our opinions may differ on various topics, it doesn't mean that one person is right over the other person. And I think we need to navigate better those situations in teaching students how to respect each other at the end of the day and respect each other's opinions.
Thank you. And Mr. Bon Giavani, you have a final response for thirty seconds.
Yeah, my concern is, again, with the advocacy policy. I spent thirty-seven years as a teacher, never discussing my religious or political opinions. That doesn't mean I didn't have discussions in the classroom, but I never put my opinions out there. And I'm really concerned that those opinions...teachers have a great influence on students, and I get really concerned about opinions that are being put out there, whether they relate to anything. So I am concerned about the advocacy policy.
Thank you. Well, unfortunately, we only have time for one more audience question. Not unfortunately, I think it's been a great conversation. What is your position on school vouchers? Mr. Bon Giavani, we will start with you.
That's a good question. We had a discussion on that before. I'm kind of up in the air with that. You know, I think one thing that's true is when you look at a public school, they really don't have any competition. Yeah, you have your private schools, you have your charter schools, you have your cyber schools, but what really...what real competition do they have? What incentives do they have to get better, obviously, toward the taxpayer? Of course, we want to certainly do things for those students to make them better and give them a great experience. Vouchers are iffy because of the situation of taxpayers' money going for someone to send their kid to a private school. So I'm kind of up in the air. I'd like to listen to conversations about that. As I said, I'm a pretty good listener, and I think those conversations come down to talking about things that going back to benefit kids. So I really can't get a definite on the tuition values.
Thank you. Mr. Beaverton?
I...
Sorry.
Of course. Well, yes, I am willing to listen if there are new thoughts brought up. I'm happy to hear them. Excited to hear what other people think on this stage. For me personally, no, I'm against the voucher system. I believe that the most important thing that the American...that we as Americans have is a public education system where everyone has equal rights. The ability to send certain students to a private school due to their financial well-being is a separation of rich versus poor, and that does not create a balance and an equal system. So the most important thing is that public education remains strong and the public school systems remain strong. If they are sent elsewhere, if they are...if there becomes a two-tiered system, then, again, we don't have that competition that we find so important here. What we have is the rich having it all and the poor having none, and that is something I'm extremely concerned about.
Thank you. Mr. LaFever, you have ninety seconds.
This is a topic that I would actually like to spend more time on, you know, to be perfectly frank with you. It's very much something that, like Alissa said, I would like to have more conversation. I would like to listen to opinions from both sides, and I would like to formulate my opinion based off the facts and those viewpoints. I will say that I am inclined to agree with Mr. Beaverton, simply because that's how it appears to be on the surface, but just because I have an opinion doesn't mean it's not able to be changed. To me, I'm not willing to listen.
Thank you. Mr. Maneri, you have ninety seconds.
Sure. So to, again, agree with Mr. Beaverton and Mr. LaFever. Is it Fever? Oh, Fever, sorry. I'm sorry. I'm trying to get it. I'm not entirely sold on the idea of school vouchers personally. I am still trying to make up my own mind and, again, still looking to have input. What I do believe, though, fundamentally, is that the parent should have say at the end of the day about where their children go and what kind of education they have. I believe whether that's, you know, school vouchers or whether that looks like something else, I'm not entirely sure. But I do believe that the parents are the ones that, at the end of the day, should be making those decisions for their children. And I agree that sometime...that right now, our public schools in general are not producing the kind of students and young adults that are needed in some of these fields, and that we need to address that, and we need to look at what kind of things can be done to improve that and to dismiss, you know, alternative funding methods or allowing parents greater freedom, again, where they send their children. I think we have to look at all options on the table. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McMullin?
Thank you. I'm more inclined to agree with Mr. Bon Giavani. I think competition breeds the best product, and it definitely needs to be discussed and investigated much deeper than we have time for tonight. We've got another ten minutes to go, and I wish this had been a question earlier posed, but a friend of mine told me a story about it when we were discussing it. And he said, you know, "It's like when you go to shop for a car and everybody pays already for, say, a Chevy Caprice." And you say, "You know what? I don't want a Chevy Caprice. I'd rather have that Ford pickup truck over there." And they say, "You can absolutely have that Ford pickup truck over there, but you know what? You still have to pay for the Chevy Caprice." But you know what? Now you don't get the Chevy Caprice. You're just going to pay for it anyway. So it's like, it comes down to money and the parent's choice, I think in that case, should trump the public school funding. Why would I send my child to a school that's not going to instill in them the beliefs that my family has, whether it be a charter school, whether it be a private parochial school, or what have you? But I'm absolutely willing to have the conversation and not deeper into it, because I think it's much warranted. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Taylor, you have ninety seconds.
I would agree that there needs to be more discussion on this issue. I'm not for or against school vouchers. What I would bring to the conversation about this is that we need to make sure if there's a school voucher system, or some sort of system like what we have with the cyber charters, if my tax money, if your tax money, is going to paying for these alternative school choices, there needs to be more accountability put on these schools. These schools are not churning out better students. They are consistently, across the board, failing on their graduation rates, on their test scores, on the children's ability to cope with societal pressures. Across the board in Pennsylvania, these cyber charters are often failing our children. So if my tax money and your tax money is going to go to supporting these schools who are using that money to buy brick-and-mortar buildings when their entire education exists on an online platform, we need to ask, "Why is my tax money going to them?" We need to make sure that they're upheld to the same standards that public school is, because that's part of the issue why we're losing so many students to cyber schools and cyber charters, is that the public schools do not have the money to market the way cyber charters do. The cyber charters are not required to use your money responsibly. So we need reform there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Russell?
I think there's two issues here. The one is whether we want federal dollars or state dollars being used for private education, and it's already happening now. If you think of the 529 plans that you can develop, that's tax-free money, and you can use that for private schools. You also look at the EITC program, which is the earning from tax credit program, that's already using tax dollars to fund private schools. So I think you have to look at it as a whole. Vouchers is another system that's set up to do that. It may be used poorly in some situations, but it actually can be used to benefit low-income people who couldn't afford to send their child to a private school, and the only school, the public school they have, is failing the neighborhood miserably. So I think we have to look at an all approach and figure out what works. The one thing that I would not advocate for, and this is what is similar to those surgical centers that popped up, where surgeons formed surgical centers to peel off all the profitable surgeries and let the hospitals tank, and they had to handle everything else. You can't have private schools just taking the easy cases, that the good families, the good kids, that there are no problems, and then let the public school deal with all the difficult situations and all the kids that need IEPs and everything else. There has to be a balanced approach, but I think it's all of the above, not an either-or situation.
Thank you. Mr. Traubert, you have ninety seconds.
Yeah, I'm sitting up here because obviously I believe in public education. I don't believe that competition necessarily will produce better outcomes. I mean, look at the cyber charter schools. We have kids that are failing. The schools are failing what they're supposed to be doing. They are taking public funds. It's not regulated. I think we can look at holding the public schools accountable for bad outcomes. They need to definitely have reform with the cyber charters for the same thing. Yeah, I need to support public school.
Okay. We have some time for any rebuttals. Would anybody like to make a rebuttal? Go ahead.
To Mr. Traubert's point, I think the vouchers would be the incentive for the public schools to be held accountable. Their actions have repercussions, and families leaving because they don't feel that their values are aligned with the public school system, that's their path, and that's what the school, the public school system should look at. There's the incentive, and that would create a better inclusive environment for our entire community. Thank you.
Thank you. And do we have a opposing view, a Democratic view, for thirty seconds? Okay. Well, we are actually at the end of our time. We are going to have a closing statements, and according to the drawing that we had right before, Mr. Bon Giavani will go first. You will each have sixty seconds to make your closing statement. Thank you.
First, I'd like to thank the legal women voters for holding this. I think this has brought a lot of information to the voters. I'd like to thank everyone who came out to support everyone up here. I don't follow a political agenda. There are people on this stage that has labeled myself and my running mates as political activists and extremists. If you talk to any people that know me, I am the farthest from that that you can get. My campaign is rooted in my extensive educational background and also as a proud parent of two children that graduated from Penridge. I want to bring common sense back or continue it to this board, and I want to be involved in tough conversations and willing to listen to other people's point of view. I'll end it with, as I talked before, my four principles that guide this: our integrity, honesty, commitment, and educational experience. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Beaverton?
Yes, I would have liked a better chance to talk about transparency and my plans to...the plans I have to increase transparency and communication on community outreach. I have some ideas and thoughts that I think would be really helpful to increase that and give some satisfaction to people who don't feel heard or people who don't feel response. I'd also like to focus on special education and safety for all students. Those are topics that were not brought up, but I have a lot of thoughts about. And lastly, I want to use this time to thank not only the volunteers and the candidates, but especially my wife and my family, who, if you think that campaigning every day or every weekend takes a lot of time, it takes a lot of time from her, too. So I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. LaFever?
I am going to echo the others and say thank you very much for putting this on. This is the first time I've ever done something like this. I do not like being in the spotlight, so this is different, but it's been a great experience. One thing that I really want to make sure I close on is making sure that it is very clear that we don't need a bipartisan board. We need a nonpartisan board. You need people who are not looking at politics. Our opponents keep saying that we've labeled them their stance or their slogans, "Education" or "Activism." There's a lot of witspilling on both sides, and I completely agree that that needs to stop. We need to simply talk about the actual issues and the solutions that we can come to over them.
Thank you. Mr. Maneri?
So just, again, I'd like to thank you to the legal women voters for putting this together, but I would just like to acknowledge all seven of the candidates, including myself. Running for this position is often seen as a thankless job. This is an unpaid position, and we take a lot of flak during meetings, regardless of which side we sit on. So I would like to say to both my running mates and to my opponents, thank you for putting yourself forward as a candidate to serve this position. It is certainly a worthwhile vestager. And again, we want to focus on...our slate's focus, again, is on education and not activism, and I believe that that choice about which slate would bring that approach to the board was made clear, and I hope in our answers. So again, thank you so much, and have a good rest of your week.
Thank you. Mr. McMullin?
Thank you. I'm here for common sense policy for the entire district, all the students and all the taxpayers. It's been said several times tonight that the party doesn't matter, but the truth of the matter is that our constituents, they do care. It matters to them. And when they feel that there's somebody here that's going to fight for the things that they feel are valuable to their family, then it matters. And I'd just like to thank everybody for having us here this evening and for you all to take time away from your families. I know big thanks to my family and my wife specifically for losing me for the past several months, because this is not an easy thing to do. And my hands off to everybody under this table for throwing their head in the ring, because it's not an easy task.
Thank you. Ms. Taylor?
I also would like to echo thank you to the legal women voters and thank you to all of you coming out to see us. Thank you for having conversations with us and hearing our thoughts. What I see from, again, like I said, I've knocked doors from Democrats, independents, Republicans, and the thing I see is that people don't want to care about the letter next to the person's name. The thing I love about Bucks County and the reason I moved back here from Colorado is that the people look at the people, and we are a community that cares deeply about each other, regardless of what we might disagree on. If you need help, I'm going to stand up and come help you. I'm very active in the horse community. I'm a horse trainer here, and if any of you know horse people, you know that we don't stop until the job is done, no matter what. It's what's best for the horse. It's what's best for the kids, and it's what's best for the community. So I urge you, while you're choosing who you're going to vote for, look for the helpers. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Russell?
And this is a big responsibility that we're being asked to fulfill, as been indicated. It's a volunteer position. When I served on it for two years, it's like drinking from a fire hose. It's a big commitment, too. It's about twenty hours a month. We get that. So we're here, and the only reason I think we're here is because we said, "How can we ask other people to do it if we're not willing to do it ourselves?" So in that regard, you know, we have, what, it's a budget of almost $165 million. We have 50,000 residents. We have 11 schools. We have 6,300 students. And I would just ask you to think about the capacity, the capability, and the common sense approach to that. And if you think those things through from an experiential standpoint, I would ask for your vote on November 4th. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Traubert?
First, like everyone else has said, I want to thank the legal women's voter for putting this on. Thank you to the audience for coming out to hear us and respect what each of us has set up here and to the fellow candidates. This, for me, has been kind of relaxing. We're relaxing than I thought it would have been. Felt like great conversation. You know, when you're out there November 4th, please vote for us. You know, one thing that I think I bring to the table is I'm a good listener. I'm able to make a hard decision and, you know, make that decision based on how I feel and not how I feel, but what's presented to me with facts and evidence is what's the best outcome for the students, right? I'm a father. I'm a community member. I want to see... I'm a father. I'm a community member. I want to see that my children have the best education. And I want to see that all the students in this district have the best education and that we can give them the resources that they need so they're best set up for their adult life.
Wonderful. Well, thank you and thank you to the candidates for a great discussion and a great forum. And thank you to all the audience members for attending and being a part of the political process. The candidates will be available later for further discussions afterwards. And as you heard, election day is Tuesday, November fourth. Please do not forget to vote. And on behalf of the League of the Women Voters and all of my colleagues here, have a great night. Thank you.